All right.
Great. Welcome, everybody. You can call to order the October 30th, 2025 meeting of the North Beach Planning Commission. We can run over the agenda for this evening. We have minutes from the August 20 meeting. To review, we have a report from the zoning director. We have our planning annual report. Overall discussion on operational issues for the commission. We had one more item on the agenda for today, which looks like has been retracted. So what I just mentioned is the entirety of the the meeting this evening. So maybe the first thing to to go over is reviewing minutes from August 28. I don't know if the commission members need a minute to review this. Maybe we can take a minute or two just to review this so we can get it approved and or make any amendments. Oh, thank you for that.
Karen? Town Administrator Linda Vasallo has a question for you.
Okay.
Never mind. She was just checking to make sure you were on.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Do any members have questions or amendments they'd like to make on the on the August 28? Meeting?
If you go to the motion made by Steve, it talks about the inclusion of the entrance for the shops. The audio may have cut off on us or was a little unclear. It just says entrance off of north. And I believe what we had discussed and what the planning commission had recommended was that the entrance and exit come off of Chesapeake Avenue the way it is now and not off of Bay Avenue at all.
That's, I guess, yeah, they were saying on the north side. Oh, actually, I don't know what the north would have been then. Oh, but yes, I agree. That's the way I call the conversation as well.
It proposed an entrance off of Bay. And then we we've made the suggestion to had just not eliminate Bay altogether and just have it turn around and go back out the same way, the same way the parking lot works right now. Because there's nowhere for it to come on or off on Fifth Street. The only option is to leave it the way it is on Chesapeake Avenue with the entrance and exit being in the same location. Entrance onto Bay. Come in from Chesapeake and then instead of going, being able to go out there, would just turn around and come right back down. So that the traffic pattern wouldn't change off of Chesapeake Avenue now or on Bay Avenue. The traffic patterns would stay the same.
Talked about what you said at one point, and then I think we continue to discuss alternative options as well.
Yeah, trucks can't even come out. Trucks can't even come on to Bay.
Yeah, because that's like at one point we discussed swap, like why don't we just swap them? And then I think that came up and we said, okay, maybe we.
We have actually met on site with Ron with DPW. And he has agreed as opposed to having to do a full traffic study to see whether there was going to be any implementations. He'll leave the parking lot the way it is. Just do the landscape plan and leave the parking lot completely open. So it enters and exits off of Chesapeake. Right where the entrance and exit is now. There will be no exit on Bay. The both parking spaces will stay the same. Yep.
Just a small thing. I had, I believe I requested previously if our minutes could show a brief summary of our discussion. Might help verify things like this, so it doesn't happen again. Also, it's difficult for people who want to find out what was discussed and what points were brought up to sit through the whole video. If they don't know specifically what they're looking for, which is why I think a brief summary of the discussion for each search further and watch the whole video, then they obviously have that option. But he has time to sit down and watch an hour long video.
I would concur on that point. I think it's good to have. We don't have to do verbatim what people are discussing, but I think a few bullet points to kind of guide. You know, someone who's uninformed that's that's going over the minutes. I think that'd be very helpful. Any other points? Corrections? I'll take that silence as a no. And if we, if someone would like to make a motion to I've lost my paper here. Yeah, someone like would like to make a motion to approve these as amended.
I move that we approve the minutes as amended.
Second? Oh, good. Second on that?
All second.
Oh, in favor? Great, great. And we have a member new to me on the commission for Karen, Karen Roth. So I wanted to welcome you. And if you could maybe say just a few words about yourself and where you live and things like that for North Beach, that would be great for us.
So actually, so I'm the with the town attorney's office and I am. What can I tell you about me? Let's see, I have done municipal work for over 30 years representing boards and commissions, including boards of zoning appeals and planning commissions, as well as the elected officials and worked with staff. I live in Anaronda County. Okay. Side of Annapolis.
Great.
And that's where our office is, is in Annapolis.
Okay, great. So you'll be joining us on regular basis for for meetings and okay. That is, that is great. Great to have you as a resource then for for these meetings.
Thank you.
And just to check on I guess the the next item on the agenda is maybe Rick, if you can give us a update on the annual report. And maybe give a little brief background for those who aren't familiar with it.
So the Maryland Department of Planning requires planning commissions to submit an annual report every year. It basically goes over all of the residential permitting that takes place within quality. But I'm asking Jerome to look at and the town the commission look at tonight is what's called the short form because we have under a certain number of new residential permits for housing issued. The town is only required to do this short form. It shows that we issued in fiscal year 24, eight residential permits. There's six other questions that are answered there. They ask about planning commission and board of appeals members training. Whether we need any assistance from the Department of Planning. Four or five basic questions every every year that we fill out. A little behind on this one, but we got it done. This one's pretty straightforward. Once Jerome signs off on it, I'll send it to the Maryland Department of Planning and it'll be done.
It's okay. Rick, can you give a little background on this just in terms of the mid-cycle comprehensive plan? I mean, I think most of us are familiar with, I guess it's the 10-year comprehensive plans that are done.
Yeah, so the mid-year, five-year report was done several years back. The 10-year review, the state allows several years worth of leeway to accomplish once you start the implementation of the review. We should be on schedule for January to be completed. The five-year was completed and there were no issues with the state.
I could Jerome, just for a second, you know, back in the spring, we this Linda Vasallo, town administrator. Sorry about that. We had held a public meeting just to get public feedback in the spring and we got a lot more participation than we were normally used to getting. So it's taken us a little bit more time to compile that data and get it in a in a format for you to understand and present to you and also to make sure the public got their feedback. Kind of melded into that document. So we're just wrapping up internally. We're going to bring it. I'm going to bring it back to the planning commission December, no later than January, and then off to the state once you approve it, but the public feedback was good. We've gotten some questions that have come in asking, you know, just have they have we considered it? So we're we've gone back and take a look at everything that was submitted. You know, we had the stuff on the wall. We had the questions that came in afterwards. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. Sorry.
Great. That that's that's very helpful. That was a that was a great session, I thought. Just in turnout and and kind of people's energy was great.
So and that's all I had. The rest of my zoning report was pulled. The okay, oh, yeah. And if you would like, you can ask for a motion to approve the annual report.
Okay, great. Any any questions or or comments, or if you need another minute to review this for any of the members? And if you are comfortable with it, you can make a motion to approve and then I can I can sign this week.
Chair, we have a motion and a second on the table for you.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear that. So I guess if you've had a second, then I can say all in favor. Great. Rick, how can I digitally sign that or what's I assume I can, yeah? Can you all hear me or no?
I can hear you.
Yep, we can hear you in here.
Okay, great. Just just a question on how to how to sign this and and get this back to you. I assumed to Rick, right?
Digitally is fine.
Digitally is fine. Okay, great. That's what I assume. And unless I'm missing something, it looks like the remainder of the items on the agenda have to do with some of the work Linda's been doing, we've been doing together on the operationals, kind of documenting operations. Making some tweaks to how we do things. Trying to make things a little bit more efficient. Linda, any any thoughts on how to best kind of structure this for discussion?
Sure, if you want, I can just kind of walk through what we sent them electronically and then that will also give us some transparency with the public. So if you don't mind, I'll just take it over.
I think that's, I think that's great. And you can give you can give the like some abridged, you know, versions and background to this as well. So that would be wonderful.
Okay, you got it. If I get too too wordy or lengthy, just let me know. Or if I talk too fast, which is one of my bad habits. Please stop me. So early in October, I sent any memo out to the planning commission following, I think, the August meeting. And it occurred to us at the staff level and I spoke with Jerome about kind of tightening up our staffing procedures and how we were getting materials and doing operations for the planning commission. And one of the things that clearly prompted that discussion was at our last meeting. The public was having trouble hearing you from the seats you were in. And so we're revamping our approach on how the public is going to start hearing you either on Zoom or while they're in in seat here. And by putting you up at the dais, it puts you better in a better place to speak loudly and have your voice heard. So that's one of the changes we we made. We also wanted to make sure internally that we were separating the staffing responsibilities so that the structure and legal requirements that we were meeting, both from what the code says, what the planning commission's rules and operating procedures say. And also making sure that we had enough staff support in the right way to get you where you needed to be for each of your meetings. So we took a, we took a look at staffing requirements. We took a look at the state training requirements, both for the planning commission members and for the staff. And we got those planning, the planning requirements sent out to the planning commission members, which you probably have already received and most of you, I think, have completed. I had recommended to both Jerome and the mayor that we consider doing a staffing, internal staffing restructure for support, which I'll walk through in a minute. And then I wanted to make sure that we had very clear roles about who does what as far as the planning commission chair, the planning commission members, what the town council's role are is. And how we get information out better to the public. So we did a really hard deep dive. I was kind of glad we didn't have a meeting last month because it gave us a little bit more of an opportunity to do that. So the first memo you got was called the planning commission restructure. It really wasn't a restructure. It was just kind of refinement of what we were looking at. The second thing that we worked on was we sent a schedule out or a draft schedule out for planning commission submissions and when you were going to get information and when the public was going to get information. I felt like in talking with Rick and Stacy that we were not allowing ourselves enough time, most importantly, to really look at the rules and regulations to make sure we were giving you a strong, valid recommendation based on what the code said. And we weren't giving you enough time to look at that. So I've prepared with Rick's help and Stacy's help. What I believe is good meeting submission schedule, we're using it. We're using a similar structure with the town council now. And you can take a look at that. You don't have to make a decision tonight. What I'd really like for y'all to do is take the next couple of weeks and really look at this and then maybe we could formalize it at next month's meeting. I would like to start using this schedule as soon as possible. Because we sometimes allow our applicants to submit documents up to three or four days before the meeting, and that's not enough time to really give us as a staff, an appropriate amount of time to get you good information and to give them the support that they need. So that was a really important critical piece of information. And then one of the final things internally we have done is we've separated the roles between what I will call the planning commission liaison and the planning commission. Rick, the planning, the planning director. Rick is your technical advisor. Rick is the person that does the intakes on the permits. He looks at what's allowed to to do. He walks around with this three ring binder and says whether it's legal or not, but Stacy handles all of the operational procedures. She does the intake. She does the minutes. She makes sure that we're legal with where we are with submissions, with all of our requirements with the state. She works independently with the attorney. So we are going to be splitting those duties apart. And at the meeting, Stacy will help you more with your procedural operations and stick and Rick will stick with providing technical support to the to the council so that when he's here, he's focusing on the technical side. And Stacy's here to focus on the operational side. So those are the, those are the kinds of things we're talking about. No really big structure changes as far as the public input part. I do think it's going to give the planning commission better support. I do think it's going to make operationally our job easier and getting you what you need by having just a little bit more time from the applicants. I'm not sure how that's going to be received. But that's kind of where we are. And so we wanted to get this information to you, let you chew on it for a bit. And let us know what you thought. And that's kind of where we are. So, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Yeah, first, just a, just a big a big thank you to Linda for putting this together. I think she's correct in saying, you know, a lot of, not a lot of this. It's hard to know how much, but a good portion of it is things we're already doing in some in some ways. And I think documenting this is great. And identifying roles and responsibilities so they're clear is always a good thing. So really happy that she was able to do that. I know for the the reports that are getting, that are going to be done by Rick each week, there's a little more detail in there. So thank you, Rick, in advance for that. I think having the extra references to codes will help us inform our discussions more. But I know it does probably require a little bit more work and prep for you for the meeting. So that's appreciated in advance. I do think it will speed up the meetings. I think it will make us better informed when we're making decisions and evaluating what's in front of us. Any, I know there there were some questions by email and these were sent out for review. So any any follow-up from those either in a broad sense or on a particular, particular point?
Excuse me. On the submission schedule, it provides the dates, the submissions are to be submitted to the town presumably to you, Rick. But does not necessarily reflect, although there's, you know, a lot of time in between, say, you know, submission date of December 30th, meeting date 22nd. Is there a target to provide the reviewed information to the commission prior to meetings? In other words, 48, 72, seven days, five days?
Yes, and that's my fault that that's not on there. Our goal is to get it to you a week in advance. That is our goal for the town council and we've been working really hard to keep to that. So I will update the schedule for you.
So that's like five working days or
At least.
Okay, thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Under the Week Two Training Preparation Stat Report Deliverable One says distribute required training curriculum to the planning commission that's complete. I don't know that that's been, I have not received that.
Okay. I will check with Stacy on that.
And then
And Steve, I kind of missed that point. Can you can you elaborate on that a little bit? I think I misunderstood what you were saying.
The Week Two Deliverables, the training preparation, there's a deliverable that says distribute required training curriculum to the planning commission and it's noted as being complete.
Ah, yeah, okay.
And I'm just saying, I did not receive it. I don't know if anybody else has. Okay.
I'll check with Stacy on that. Thank you.
Okay. My third question is about the delegation of responsibilities with regard to alternates. What I read, and I may not have read everything completely, it simply says they serve two years and they are responsive when there's a absence or recusal from one of the planning members. But I'm not sure how that works in terms of your, their presence here during a full board when everybody is here. So I think about in terms of like a jury trial. Jurors are sit and listen throughout the trial. They don't ask questions. They don't deliberate and they don't vote. So that's kind of the workings of what an, doesn't really describe what an alternate does when we have a full commission. A full board, whether they're up here, whether they're able to ask questions. Second question, I guess, with regard to that is if we have two alternates and one person is out. Does the chair select who, which alternate will serve? Just the, you know, inner workings of what alternates do, when and how.
Well, I don't, I don't know if Karen wants to jump in, but one, but before she does, maybe one thing we could take a look at would be adding to the operating procedures, how that would work and bring back a draft for your review. Maybe they could alternate if, you know, one week, one meeting. This person does it, the next meeting that person does it.
Or the chair decides.
Or the chair, whatever you'd like. But yes, we can clear, we can clear that up.
Yeah. And with regard to, as my first point, with regard to how they function during a full board, a full, fully attended meeting.
Is your question whether they should be here or should they just be part of the audience or not here at all? All of those. Okay, we'll work those out.
As, as an alternate, I had the same questions, but, and I did present, I asked Stacy a little bit, and that's why I wanted to, you know, come tonight because as an alternate, I would like, for what it's worth, that I would like to still attend even if I'm not up here or being used because I think it's difficult if I'm not, if I don't know what's going on, how can I jump in? Like if it's something that we've gone back and forth on, and then I'm brought in because someone's not here, then if I don't know what's going on, I don't think that I can make the like most well-informed decision. So like, I would volunteer myself to say that like I would be more than happy to attend, whether it be just as an audience member, just to kind of be in the know of what's happening, even if I have no, you know, rights, so to speak, as a commission.
Okay, well, we will get that clarified in the, in the next draft of those operating procedures. And then Karen, I don't know if you want to jump in.
I have a question. In case you haven't seen my hand.
Yeah, I see.
Sorry.
Elizabeth has a question online.
So the question is, do you expect, how, how far in advance will we know whether or not you need an alternate to be on the board? Is it the actual day? Or how, how far in advance do the members need to let you know that they're not going to be able to attend so that we can be alerted that we need to attend?
And to be on, that's kind of why I like voices, like I would come regardless because you might not know. Like life happens sometimes, right? And you might not know if someone's going to be here or not until they don't show up. But I don't, that's also could be considered a big ask as an alternate.
It is a big ask.
To say you're just going to come at every meeting.
Some of us have special responsibilities that we're trying to actually balance with this commitment.
I mean, maybe just to provide some insight on, on the kind of, the de facto functioning. Typically, and this is how things are now, no relation to how they can be improved or maybe done in the future. Typically now, Stacy would send out an email to see if people can attend, usually two days before, you know, meetings are on a Thursday, typically Monday, Tuesday.
It's been 24 hours in the last year or two. It's been 24 hours instead of the normal three days that it was before the last year or so.
Do you have a preference?
With the new schedule, we'll be getting documents 30 days ahead of time. Our goal in-house is to be able to do my review, public works review, contact any other outside agencies we have for review. And the goal is going to be to be able to have those loaded in board docs within two weeks, which would give the commission a full two weeks to review. Very latest would be one week, seven days before, a whole week ahead of time. I think when Stacy loads those in, we can then ask, poll the members, who's going to be available for this meeting? That gives the alternates one week's notice instead of two or three days.
May I address the commission?
That, that would be great. Please, Karen.
So there are various ways for you to address the issue that you're talking about because there's no uniform way amongst, I would say, all of my clients as to how each of the planning commissions deal with it. Some require the alternates to come to every meeting just in case something carries over to another meeting so that they're fully apprised of what's going on. Others, because they record their meetings, others will say that the alternates do not have to come, but in order to be able to participate and vote at a meeting at which they may be asked to attend because it's continued and somebody who was there before cannot attend, you would have to watch the video or listen to the recording of the meeting and review the materials. That's the key thing. You can't participate in the vote if you haven't read everything and listened to the whole recording or watched the video. So I think that you can give that some thought as to how you want to do it. And you are correct. There are times when people will not be able to give you advanced notice that they can't attend, and the alternate might be asked that day of the meeting if they're able to come. Clearly, the, the best practice is to give you as much notice and ask you in advance, but sometimes they're just not able to do that.
I have a follow-up question to that, too, because like, according to the, you know, policies that paperwork that we got, it says technically in here that three members constitute a quorum. So if three members, like there's four people, like do you need, like, not in because I'm trying to get rid of myself because I don't want to, but you know, technically, if you have five members, two alternates, but you have three people, according to this, three people, you don't need anyone. So is it like, is it a desire of wanting to have five people? Because technically, according to this, you can operate without having a full selection of people. So I don't know if it's something of like, okay, legally, technically, number-wise, three constitutes as a quorum, but then maybe you change it to say but you have more present. I don't know.
I would think, and Karen, I jump in anytime, but I would think the preference would be to have five members here, but if you absolutely couldn't, you could still conduct your business with three if required.
And Linda, you're absolutely correct. The quorum requirement is the minimum necessary to conduct business. But the applicant might want a full board to hear their application. So I think that it's preferable to get as close to a full board as you can for those times when you have especially applications that are going to come before you that might be contentious.
And so then my, my follow-up from that, sorry, I have lots of questions. Because, so, okay, let's say we have five people, but three or, let's say, five people, two are alternates, right? Technically, then would the alternates still vote? Because you only technically need three. Or would all five?
You would all five vote.
Well, like if all five members, but two of them being the alternates, technically you don't need the alternates votes. You need three.
I, I mean, if you have three people, three regular commission members here and two alternates sitting at the dais, to me, that's a full five-member board. Because they're alternates. So I would assume that you would vote.
That would just still vote. I just.
I would think so, too. Correct, Karen?
Yes.
Yeah. So if there's seats to be filled and the alternates are there, they participate and vote.
Correct.
Okay, so I have a question about prioritizing of alternates. You know, let's go back to when we sworn in. When we got sworn in, the, there were three applications that came in front of the commission, whoever it came in front of. And the answer that we were given, that the reason that they, that one of the three applicants was chosen is because their application came in before the other two applications. Does it, did that set a precedent now that the application that came in second now has the ability to be on the board before the third applicant? I know that's kind of crazy, but I am actually trying to back up to what was the decision that actually created alternates? Because I don't know anywhere in the charter or anywhere that says that there are alternates. So, and somebody just made the decision that we needed to have alternates because we had three applicants that came in, and so we wanted to accept all three applicants. And I just was confused on how, how that whole process of decision-making was made and how that filters into just like the regular way that the board is, the commission is executed and formed, formed and executed. I don't know if that made sense to anyone but me.
It, it, it did. Ms. Lotson, I believe that was a town council decision. That was a town council appointment decision. I really don't want to speak on their behalf, but I think a, a better approach would be, let's come up with something for our operating procedures that's fair so that we can rotate those members around if that's the pleasure of the Planning Commission. I, I really don't know if there was an intention there or not. I could certainly check it, but I think it's only fair to rotate those positions around. And, and that's all I'm going to say because I'm staff to you. So I'm going to turn it back over to the chair and the discussion, commission for that discussion.
So yeah, if, if you don't mind, if you look at the, so the land use article of the Antedocota, Maryland is what authorizes the creation of the Planning Commission. If you look at Section 2102, it addresses the membership of the Planning Commission. And it talks about how Planning Commission shall consist of three, five, or seven members. And then it talks about how they're appointed and how they're removed. At the very end of the section, it talks about how the legislative body may designate one or more alternate members to sit on the Planning Commission in the absence of a member on the commission. And if an alternate member is absent, the legislative body may designate a temporary alternate member to sit on the Planning Commission. So there's authorization in state law for alternate members and for more than one alternate member to be appointed. And so that's where it comes from. As to the actual hows and whys, I can't address that either.
I think it would help us all a lot if we, as a commission, since part of our job is to recommend things up to the council, that we actually write this into Section 8 and send it up to them. There are lots of questions. There have been a lot of good points raised. Personally, my feeling is I would rather have them here at every meeting because that way they get the full benefit of the entire discussion and can follow along. And if there's something that happens that they just can't attend, then I would put in the video as a backup. But I think they should be here. But that's just my personal view. And we really need to get something under the membership section in 8-103 in our zoning ordinance so that, that it's clarified for what North Beach does under the auspices of 2-102. What do we do here?
All right, we will take that as an action item from staff, if that's okay, Mr. Heiner. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I had a few questions on that. So the council mentioned that if we have only three vice five, even though three is authorized to make a quorum and a decision, is that, does that make it default appealable?
Good question.
Just by virtue of having a quorum?
Well, if I have three here, it makes a quorum vice the whole board, or rather, the whole commission five. You mentioned, is, are you seeing in your other work that that gets appealed immediately or is?
Oh, no, 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 no. And so what it generally will say in those codes is it will say it is up to the applicant to, let's say acquiesce to moving forward with the three-member board as opposed to having a full five-member panel. But I do not know, I don't recall whether your code provides for that. It's something you could put in your rules and procedure if you felt that that was necessary to.
Could we address that by simply asking the applicant day of?
Yep.
Like if we have three here, they want to make a presentation, we say, are you going to accept determination from a three, you know, that we have the minimum quorum?
Well, I think what you would say is something to the effect, we have three members present and we can conduct business and move forward tonight. Or if you would prefer, we can defer your matter for, to the next meeting the following month when perhaps there will be a five-member board.
Well, I, I guess the way I look at our codes and permits, so I'm like trying to anticipate, so if, if I had something that needed to hit a Board of Appeals and Planning Commission, I, I, I think the idea of why we have a quorum and then alternates is so we can, people can progress their work and they're not hung up for six months, you know, on a 12, 100 square foot addition or something.
Right.
I think that's a good point of procedure to put in, though, when we have less than five.
Yeah, we could just ask the applicant if that's, you know, they want to proceed. Thank you.
One, one other point is on the virtual attendance. I am still a little unclear on, on if the virtual and in-person is fully malleable, which may make it easier for alternates to be present more often. And how, how that's handled in terms of, you know, the public and our responsibilities as commissioners.
Do you want me to?
Yes, please.
Whoever, whoever.
Yes, please.
So generally, that is now a policy that's established by each of the boards and commissions. Some prefer to have everyone be in person and not virtual. You can allow people to attend virtually, but those who attend virtually must have access to all the information that is presented. So let's say staff got up in the middle of the meeting and distributed a memo or a site plan or, or something to that effect. That information would also have to be shared with the people who were attending virtually. Now, one of the things that I would ask you is, is sometimes you have applicants that want to attend virtually, which makes it sometimes harder to be able to share information and ask questions. So that's another thing I would ask you to consider is what is your policy or procedure? And maybe you already have one, and I'm just not aware of it, with respect to people attending virtually who are presenting to you.
If I may, I think the specific question was relative to alternates being able to attend virtually. I guess if I had to make an input on that, I think it would be a little, I hate to say the word unjust, for just alternates to be singled out and said, you have to appear onsite every single time, and you cannot effectively do your position if you're virtual. For example, if, you know, you have the last moment that you need to pull the alternate, and the alternate has all the information because they provided the information two weeks before or whatever, I don't see what precludes them from functioning virtually unless we want to go back to the way we did business pre-COVID.
Elizabeth, that's why I was asking the question. I wanted to make it as easy, you know, for alternates as possible to be engaged, but have the option of not being there.
Don't misunderstand me. I'm not trying to be, you know, confrontational. I'm bringing the question back to exactly what you stated because the answer was moving us towards someone who was presenting their information and they were doing it virtual. So I just want to clarify that.
Yeah.
That Jerome, if I could, it's Linda. In one of the, in the draft operating procedures that we prepared for the Planning Commission, we do address this a little bit. And it's talking about, and I'm just going to read it, but remote participation by members via electronic means may be per, or shall be permitted with camera on and shall count towards a quorum provided all participants can hear and be heard by one another on the table, I'm sorry, one another and by the public. It really doesn't address alternates or members. It just says members. You know, when we drafted this, we, as staff, we, we kind of count the alternates as members because they are alternate members. We could probably tighten this language up a bit and bring it back.
Okay, great.
That would be okay.
And, you know, just on the documentation thing, I, I really can't think of any recent meetings where there has been any paper documentation from our end produced. Sometimes applicants might have paper if they attend. Generally, if there's anything complex, people show up. You know, some, the, the people that want to do things virtually are usually very straightforward, you know. If people are trying to make a case, anything out of the ordinary, you know, potentially. Uh, if people are trying to make a case, anything out of the ordinary, you know, potentially contentious, they show up to, to make their case and bring props or whatever they, you know, want to bring. So, um, I, I don't feel that that would be a tremendous issue. Uh, and we're, you know, everything's on board docs now and easily accessible for everybody. So um, I feel like that access is pretty good.
All right, we'll, we'll take this feedback and try and weave it into something everybody can work with and get it out to you in plenty of time to to weigh in. Obviously, we're not going to do anything with this until the planning commission has approved it before we send it up to council. And I think Kevin had something he had.
Yeah. And then just a, a point of order here. I want to draw, uh, attention to the chat. Oh, I don't know where that comment went. Uh, we had a comment from, here it is. R H M. That can be addressed now or later. Just wanted to bring it to your attention.
I'm sorry, I, I, I didn't understand that.
Uh, there's, there's just a comment in the chat I wanted to bring to attention. I think it was about, um, this matter. Town council needs to formalize the alternates or developer or aggravate, uh, aggrieved citizen will drive a truck through a decision in court they disagree with. So just a comment.
And then if, if I could, and I, I really don't want to lengthen this meeting any longer than it needs to be, but we have one thing I really need to bring to the attention of the planning commission and please just take this discussion for what it is. It's going to be very direct and I really need your direction on how you would like to handle this. But we have strong provisions about public comment and public hearings and how the planning commission addresses those two items. Any, any member of the planning commission, the town administrator, the town attorney or your designees have the ability to speak at any meeting that you have. You may allow public participation at your meetings if you so choose. However, you drive that public comment, the attendees at your meetings do not. So if you would like to have public comments at your meetings, we should probably set up a time at those meetings for you to do so at appropriate times so you can maintain control of the discussions. And then at public hearing, public hearings are public hearings. There that you're there to take that feedback, you're there to decide uh, what recommendation you're going to give the town council. We have drafted, which is very standard, um, comments, three minutes for individuals, five minutes for groups. If you want to change that, we will. But I do think you need to really think about your regular meetings and how the public is interacting with you because you don't want them to interrupt the applicants because it, it involves, it interferes with due process. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I want to tell you that I'm the one that put those public comment notes in there for your meetings. If you don't like them, I need you to tell me how you would like them to be addressed. Karen, did I get that right?
You did.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, Linda, thank you for that. Um, you know, uh, thank you for, um, maybe overestimating the town's interest in our affairs, what we do on the commission. Uh, it's encouraging. Uh, but generally we, uh, you know, it's, I, I think having those in place, because once in a while we do have, we do have contentious meetings and people want to speak and come. You know, for the most part, it's the applicant to come. Um, and that's pretty much it. But you're, you're right. And I think having those written down, as I said when we started today, I think having some of those are written down as our formal procedures. Um, I mean, helps me honestly, if, if we have a difficult crowd or a lot of people to help manage that better. So that's appreciated. I think, I, I think when I read over it, I was, I was comfortable with that. Uh, you, it was three minutes per individual or up to five minutes if the individual is representing a group. Is that correct?
Um, yes, sir. That's the way we've, we have drafted it under, you know, the public comment section and there's public hearing section. And we can certainly get legal to help us wrangle that if we need to.
Yeah.
You have very specific requirements for your public hearings. You don't have specific requirements for your meetings at this time. And I am recommending that you put them in place so that you can maintain order for not only the applicants for getting questions answered that you're asking.
Yeah, I think it's great. And I think for big meetings, once, you know, once a year or something, we'll have a a topic that gets some attention from the town. I think it's good to have structure for that. I mean, my approach to this has always been to, to let people speak. If people are interested in generally enough to come and try to create a good environment for everybody, right? To try to make things agreeable while still maintaining all the rights of the applicant. When they come to, you know, put forward their, their application. So it's a bit of a balance act. I think for me, having that structure to it for that usually once a year or something, having that, that structure is, is a wonderful thing to have.
All right, well, we'll make sure we tighten up the language and if I happen to take any feedback, critical or otherwise, certainly at your regular meetings, if you decide to do that public comment, you have every right to change that during the meeting. You do not have that once this is approved during the public hearing process.
What I would not like to see is public comment slotted in at the end after we have done all our discussion and made our decisions. Because there are times when people come to speak about certain things and they let us know of situations that they've encountered that are relevant to what we're looking at. And I think it's important for them to be able to come and tell us what their experience is because it may very well be something that we weren't aware of that would impact where we go on certain issues.
Would you like that written in as part of each project? That's presented?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I, if there are people here, if there are people here in the audience, and even if there aren't, maybe on Zoom. After everything's been presented and we've had our discussion, I think it would be important to ask if any other people have anything they'd like to share with us, how it might impact them or any comment at all before we get to the point where we're talking motions and votes.
Okay.
Thank you.
At the wishes of the commission as well.
Yeah, I think Jerome's done a pretty good job of doing that on a regular basis when asking for whether we have any questions. And then of course, if there's public here, asking whether there are any comments or questions. So I think that's fine.
All right, we'll get that, we'll get that changed in there.
I just, I had more than a few questions. So I was looking at section five. My assumption is that, uh, town ethics code falls in alignment with Maryland's ethics code. Am I missing something there? I mean, the reason I'm looking at that, I was thinking about the recusals. I mean, in my own brain, if I'm, obviously if I'm doing somebody's stormwater calc, I can't be here looking at the permit. I just wanted to make sure, is one, do, do they generally align? I mean, the state, it would seem, has a really large code as opposed to us.
They do.
Which one rules, I guess, for?
I believe they do align. Karen, I don't know if you have a comment on that. We can certainly research it a little bit more, but I do believe they align.
So, um, the Maryland ethics law requires that local jurisdictions have ethics provisions that are similar to theirs. Um, some jurisdictions have partial exemptions, some have, um, just don't have the lobbyist position, um, provisions, I'm sorry, but have all of the, um, conflict of interest provisions. And the town's conflict of interest provisions would be the same as the state. And I was trying to look that up. To tell you what section it is, but it would be the town's ethics, um, code that would apply.
Thanks. That's what I was looking for. It was easy for me just to go to the town one and, and make sure I'm lined up.
And I'm looking that up right now so that I can give you the, whoops, if I hit the right connection, there we go. It's chapter nine of the town code. And if you look at nine, four, that has all of the ethics, um, conflict of interest provisions. So it's got the participation prohibitions and be, um, and they are virtually identical to state law because they had to be.
Thank you. I, I got, I got another question. So, so we're, we're trying to align and, you know, the submissions have, have improved, uh, in, in my view exponentially over the last four or five years. So I want to thank Rick and Stacy and everybody involved. And, and now that we've, I'm looking at here that, you know, the procedural rollout, this is great. So, um, in that vein, so now if I'm getting or the commission's getting kind of full packages in advance, what are the restrictions for, uh, early comments, sharing comments between commission members?
Yeah, I know.
And those kinds of things. Cause if, if I'm going to see it, I'm going to start writing notes. Do I, you know, how do we coagulate them or do they have to get? If you're, again, one of the, the, the problems with an open forum when you are collaborating a review, uh, that's, that's kind of interesting. I guess that's be clarification vice determination or something like that?
So if I may, you've got to be very careful with that because you don't want to have a, um, a meeting that is, you know, an exchange of ideas that's considered a meeting under the Open Meetings Act. So you wouldn't want to reply all or have everybody be able to comment outside of your regular meeting. Does that answer your question or is there something?
No, it's just because, you know, when I get a lot of redundant comments from my review teams at work, I get pretty furious. So I was just wondering, but that's okay. We'll bring them in kind of like in a stovepipe then. So we, we wouldn't want to cross, like if, if I'm not going to be here, I, I could send my comments in just directly and not, not in a collaborative sense.
I am so sorry about the dog.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to bring back a definition, um, just in my 30 years of experience in working in government, it's, you have to be really careful of how many people constitute a meeting depending on which body you are. At the commissioner level, I can tell you it's three members, it's a, it's a public meeting. Two members is not. And if they're going to be out somewhere, I shouldn't really be talking about that, but the council has, has similar rules. So let us define that for you and, and bring it back because if you're a cer, Karen, and I don't, please correct me if I'm wrong, but a certain number of people at, at meeting at one time constitutes a public meeting that has to be advertised.
Right. And that's, and there have been decision of the open meetings compliance board and there's attorney generals for, um, decision or opinions that tell us that even email communications among, um, individuals, um, can result in a meeting. So if, so for example, if staff sends something out and everybody has a question, that's fine. If you each individually respond to staff. What you don't want to do is reply all and then another commission member replies all and another commission member and it ends up, you're talking about an element of a public, um, transaction, public business. And it's not in an advertised meeting. That's what you want to avoid.
We're going to spell that out very clearly. How about that?
I'm sorry, I'm going to flush these all the way out. So
Go ahead.
So let's say I'm looking at a category one or category two. I'm specifically thinking, we only have a few places that we could actually have, uh, a, a drawing set that might approach 30 drawings or 40 drawings along with a stormwater calc. So ostensibly, these are review meetings. As they're brought forward, that's, that's why I was asking, fairly cumbersome to do, uh, onboard review in a public venue. I'm fine, but that's very checklist oriented. And I just want to make sure everybody's clear eyed about what that might look like. And whether we have to break it into more than one meeting or whether that's too much. And, and again, I'm just looking at any of these larger commercial ones. You go to the cat two, there's a lot there. Granted, the county has purview on a whole bunch of it, but if we're still in the review game, we do have a rather large amount of stuff to go over.
Understood.
So to add on to that or to question further clarity, if a commission member knows they're not going to be in attendance at a particular meeting, but has done a review of the information that's been put out and wants to provide comments, although they're not going to be there, who do they send those comments to? Rick?
It should go to Rick.
Not to Jerome?
I believe Karen, they should go to the planning director, correct?
I'm sorry, the dog stopped barking so I can turn my audio back on. I apologize for that.
The, the question was.
Yes, no, it, it should go to Rick, absolutely. Or the appropriate staff member if it's not Rick, right?
He stole my next question.
I'm sorry, but I'm still not, not, not a hundred percent with that because part of our review is dialogue amongst members and one person may say one thing that sparks another thought or discussion or interpretation. So why, why, uh, why not go to the other members with that review, with those review comments?
I mean, I, I think, well.
Spark the dialogue unless it's a published.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's based off like, if you know, you're not going to be at the meeting and you still have comments, you send them to Rick, Rick will probably present them to us at the meeting, correct?
Comments and they have that.
Like speaking.
Okay.
Yeah, on your behalf, so to speak, sharing your comments. So it'll be shared with everyone.
I had one, but for, uh, do we wrap that up, Bill and every, and Steve for those questions?
I, I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I just had a quick question on the training requirements and that's only because, um, there is a, there is the bait, I forget what they call it, the basic training, if you will, uh, that's coming up in November, I think November, November 12th, if I remember. Um, so just maybe to touch base on that, I don't know how often that's offered. I know it is offered regularly, but I don't think it's on a monthly basis or anything like that. So if there are any deficiencies in terms of, uh, current members, that might be an easy way to get up to speed. Because I think that, that is required of all members. I don't even know, I, I did mine, I think four years ago, so I don't even know if that has to be uh, recertified or not. So a quick, a quick review of that might be helpful just in light of that upcoming training.
Sure. And I'll get Stacy to take a look at that and send that out to the members.
Okay. And the upcoming one is virtual. I, I already signed up for it, even though I've already taken it because it's been a while. So, and I think it's, it's a three hours, is that right? Three hours over two days or two days? Two hours over two days, something like that. They, they, they do it. I believe they do it in the evening and it is, oh gosh, I can't even remember, but it is coming up in November and it's, it's great. Yeah, it, it, it's really, it really helpful when I took it. So I do recommend it.
I just.
Training.
It's the, it, it's got a, it's got a proper name, but it's, it's like the, the basic training for planning commission members in the state of Maryland.
I believe it's offered by the Maryland Department of Planning and we'll make sure we get you, get everything out to you.
Yeah.
And Linda, will you let us know what recertification requirements are?
Absolutely.
I saw that, I'm personally, I'm coming, I, I saw that as an issue even at the council level, among council members, where they would come in and they really actually would not complete the basic certification courses that's required for council members. And then they, the, the, then some older members just were, um, working off of what they did, I don't know, a decade ago. So that just seems to be something that falls, falls through, um, at every level. Not just the certification, but the recertification. You know, how often we have to do that to stay current because everything changes all the time.
Sure. We'll take a look at it and make sure everybody's compliant.
Thank you.
And if I may just add that when you look at the Maryland Department of Planning website, it has the course materials for the planning commissioner training course. Um, and you can go through each of the. Um, and you can go through each of the modules at your own pace as well. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
They also, I believe, do have a list of people who have completed it.
We have it. We'll send it out to you. We're looking at it. I think everybody's compliant, but we're going to let us triple check it. I'm 99.9% sure we're compliant. I can see it right there. So, yeah. I, I can see it right there. I just, we was, we're just going triple checking.
Do we have any idea, um, what kinds of training materials will be required annually? Do we have to redo that thing every year? Or are there additional training materials? Because I was scouting around on the website and there wasn't a lot there. There was a little bit.
Let us, let's take a look at that. I, I mean, personally, I like to do, it's which is, and Karen, please correct me if I'm wrong. An annual ethics training is not required. It's always a good idea because things change. That's not part of your Maryland Department of Planning stuff. That's the stuff we ask our attorneys to do for us. But we'll look at everything and make sure we know exactly what training is out there. And if there's any more that you would like to take that would be helpful, we can also send that to you.
Okay, that would be great.
I have one more question. In section four for the, uh, term, and there is a note here that says like the term limit was not established. I'm including it for consideration as the alt, not to go back to the alternates, but that is what it's for. Appointed to a two-year term. And I guess I just wanted to, uh, I want a clarification as to why the alternates term would be shorter than the board members.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I need to, I have to look into that.
Again, for what it's worth, I think it should be the same length as everyone else's, just for, you know, consistency, right? And you don't have to worry, like especially talking about training, you don't have to worry about trying to train someone new, potentially new every two years if they're.
Stacy may have highlighted that as a code issue. I, I just don't know the answer.
Yeah. And it might just be because alternates are, I, you know, new, that maybe that's like kind of the basic, because there's never been a term limit before, because we haven't had them. That's all.
I can follow up on that.
Yeah. I have, I have one more question about meeting, if, um, discussing meeting items. If you, it actually goes back, honestly, it's because I'm a systems engineer and I usually work horizontally across teams. Um, and it just seems as long as I've been in this town, we've had this issue in having this, uh, cross-functional sort of communication that needs to happen. And in the case of, um, the planning commission, it just seems like there's so much information that we need to talk to. For example, you know, with Russo's parking, he had to go, we had to go back to public works. Rick, Rick had to go back to public work to look at his, so that's after the fact of making decisions. So if we have a, um, an item that's coming to us, uh, is it being looked at? Or is it considered to be looked at by other departments that need to comment on it before it even comes to us? So that we're not playing, um, you know, putting, so we have all the information. And if we need to speak to someone in another department, how does that hold up in the whole meeting situation again? You know, uh, uh, commission, planning commission person can't meet with two public works people because I don't know. It's just, that's just a, um, question I have working across commissions and committees. It just seems like that's a stovepipe that's been around forever and ever and a paradigm that really needs to be challenged. Because it, it just, just doesn't work from the planning commission's, uh, view of the whole project and what it's going to take to make that project come about.
So if I may, so one of the reasons that, um, Rick and I worked on changing the staff report that's coming to you for any project that we do intake on is to demonstrate that our public works department, planning and zoning, and when needed, the waterfront department, and even sometimes myself, which I regularly, I would really rarely comment on, that all departments have seen it. They've weighed in on what needs to happen before it comes to the planning commission. There are times, however, that questions get raised by the planning commission and those projects get picked, kicked back to staff that we did not take into consideration during the staff review. So they will go back and we'll have to do another intake and look at them. And that does get communicated to the applicant. So, um, Ms. Lawson, I don't know if that answers your question, but we're hoping to better document that with this new staff report. But that intake is happening before it's coming to the planning commission.
Yeah, I'm not doubting that the staff is not doing their best job. I'm talking about like perhaps the flood committee having to look at something like, um, you know, because we have these other commission, uh, commissions and committees that are doing work in parallel. That, that could affect a decision on something that's put in front of us. That just, to me, I'm sorry, Jer, go ahead.
I was just going to, just going to try to respond to that and tell you what we've done in the past. And, uh, I agree with you, at times it can be cumbersome. But, but going back to the discussion we were having on the, the kind of public nature of the commission and having to be transparent with how things go, if we do need more information, um, sometimes that happens, then we have to delay a decision. Right? We can't, it, it's not something that we can work on individually or off, you know, outside of the meetings. And so we'll ask Rick generally, you know, to get that information. Sometimes we can make decisions pending that information coming in. Sometimes we can, you know, we have way, a little bit ways to work around that. We can approve pending confirmation of this or something of that sort. So, uh, I agree, it can slow things down, but generally it hasn't been a huge issue. And we do have a few, few workarounds for that. And, and, and generally it's because of these transparency issues that are required for, for meetings. So I, I am hoping that the extra work that Rick is going to be doing on these will, will help with, with that.
And we do have the staff, we do have staff sitting on those commissions, particularly the flood committee. So if they're raising concerns, it's being considered as part of that, of that intake process. Sometimes it doesn't always align like it should, but it is being considered. So we will make sure to note on those reports if they have weighed in on it. That should help, um, clear up any transparency issues.
Thank you.
One quick question going, um, kind of piggybacking on Becky's last point. On the alternates and succession, I'm assuming we would all be in agreement that if a permanent member leaves the commission, that alternates are those assumed to be naturally in line to take one of those spots? It seems like the most, um, efficient and productive means to do that. But I don't know if, if any kind of, you know, state law might, um, say otherwise.
Uh, the vacancy would then have to go to the council for appointment.
Okay. Now my dog is barking. I hear him somewhere in the house, like he's trapped. So Linda, ju, just to reiterate what you said earlier, I think the idea is for us to, to, uh, individually kind of go over this a little bit more, um, and then plan on taking a vote on this, uh, to approve this at the, at next month's meeting. Is that correct?
If possible, yeah. If you need more time, certainly we can do it. I, I would really like to get this planning commission submission schedule in the works so that we get you more time. So I'm just going to take the nodding in place that we're going to start that next month or maybe the first of the year. If, if that's the pleasure of the planning commission, the rest of it, we can certainly do next month or in January. We have how much time you need.
If we have additional review comments for further looking at this between now and the next meeting.
Absolutely.
We should go to you and Rick.
Or to Stacy.
You and Stacy. Now you, Linda.
You can send them to me if you'd like. They're going to bring them. We don't count for meetings.
Okay. So, so Linda, Rick and Stacy.
That would be great. Yeah, I'm, I'm keeping, uh, I'm, I'm kind of the recording secretary for these changes, but they are, they are definitely doing the work. So.
Great. I, Linda, thank you again for, for doing that. And
Absolutely.
It's, uh, it's been needed. And I think, uh, I think all the questions tonight are evident that, you know, we're going in the right direction and clearing up a little bit of, of confusion that had been lingering for some time. So, um, yeah, very helpful for all of this.
One final question, um, the comprehensive plan concerning comprehensive plan, when we, when we'll be able to see something on that? Where, where are we in that process?
Just that earlier, and we are finalizing, putting all the pieces together and should have something, uh, December or January for the, uh, PC to approve to send to council and then off to the state.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Will we get to see that a little bit in advance of when we have to approve it? Thank you.
Great. Uh, any other business or any final comments, questions? Okay. Uh, with that, would anyone like to make a motion to close the meeting?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great meeting, everyone. Uh, thank you for everybody for attending. Thanks Karen and, and Linda and, and everyone else for, uh, for all the work tonight and prior. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good night.
Goodbye.